This conference will now be recorded.
Mayor, I asked Tim just to hang up and to call in on the phone, so he should be able to pop in.
Okay.
Are we supposed to be seeing the mayor?
No, he's called in. He's, you're not going to see him physically. You're welcome.
What about Don?
Don, can you hear us? Haven't heard from him. Tim, did you sign in?
Is Frank in too?
I do not hear Frank yet either. Frank, Tim, or Don? Frank, Tim, or Don? I see Paul. Frank, Tim, or Don? Frank, Tim, or Don?
All right, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Can you see me?
Let me know when you're all ready.
Mayor, you have, you have a call. I would just say if you can roll call when you get to that point, then we'll be able to have. Someone's on the phone and on the computer.
And try to hear about Mr. Operator and still get that shot.
We done with the feedback?
And just show everybody if they're not going to talk, it's start six, on that phone, start six.
Something wrong with the, how do I reverse my photos?
And you mute everybody again?
Everybody need to press star six to mute.
Okay, Mayor, everybody's been muted, so remember, if you need to speak, so when the roll's called, you need to push unmute to speak, and then when you're finished speaking, you can mute back again. So I think you're good to go, Mayor.
All right, I will call the emergency meeting session of Lago Vista City Council in order at 5:33 PM. And we'll start with making note of roll call.
I'm going to call, I'm going to name the names, and if you can sign in just to say, just say yes by unmuting, and Sandra can record that, so we'll start with Mayor Tidwell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Weatherly.
Here.
Counselor Williams.
Here.
Counselor Bartlow. Counselor Bartlow. Okay, absent, Counselor Collins. Counselor Tim Collins. Absent. Counselor Davaa Law. Counselor Davaa Law. You can hear, it just hurt to take your foot off.
Sure is.
Counselor Davaa Law. Hard to try one more time, please, sir. Okay, Counselor Robbins. Okay, I'm going to try the two again that we have talked to, Counselor Collins. Counselor Collins. Counselor Davaa Law. Bartlow.
I have a call.
Again, Mayor, give me one second. I just got a message from Counselor Collins. Unmute the mic, and then you can speak to the group. Counselor Collins, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm just listening.
Counselor Robbins. Okay, Counselor Robbins.
Yes.
There we go, Mayor, I have Counselor Williams, Robbins, yourself, and Mayor Protem Weatherly. So I have four that are functioning on the call.
Proceed, sir, any way we can turn that TV off in the background?
What happens is, Dave Street, if you can mute them all again, and then we'll unmute. Okay, now, Mayor, you can unmute and try it again.
Okay, now it's quiet. I don't know, I was listening to some news report there in the background. Okay, so we're ready to proceed. We've got roll calls, so I guess agenda item number one is the reading of the declaration. I don't have it in front of me, so somebody will have to read it into order for me.
Mayor, if you're good, I'll read it if you're ready.
Ready.
First amended declaration of a local state of disaster. Whereas the city of Lago Vista, Texas is preparing for widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life or property resulting from the novel coronavirus COVID-19, which has been recognized globally as a contagious respiratory virus. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, Texas Governor Greg Abbott declared a state of disaster for all counties in Texas. And whereas the city of Lago Vista has already taken steps to prepare for COVID-19, such as coordinating preparedness efforts across municipal departments and working with local partners to promote appropriate prevention and mitigation efforts. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to prepare for, respond to, and hinder the spread of COVID-19 to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas declaring a state of disaster will facilitate and expedite the use and deployment of resources to enhance preparedness and response. And whereas the declaration of local disaster and public health emergency includes the ability to take measures to reduce the possibility of exposure to disease, control the risk, prevent the spread of disease, and promote the health and safety of individuals in the city of Lago Vista. And whereas on the 18th day of March 2020, Mayor Tidwell issued a disaster declaration for the city of Lago Vista pursuant to chapter 418 of the Texas Government Code to continue for a period of not more than seven days from the date of issuance. And whereas, beginning on the 6th day of March 2020, Travis County issued a declaration of disaster and subsequently a series of orders regarding COVID-19, limiting community gatherings, ordering food established to provide takeaway or no-contact delivery food service designed to limit exposure between individuals, and ordering the holders of wine and beer retailers permits or mixed beverage permits to close common bar spaces open to the public. And whereas on the 24th day of March 2020, Travis County issued order number 2020-5, requiring, among other things, that all individuals currently living in Travis County shelter at their place of residence, all businesses operating within Travis County, except essential businesses, cease all activities within the county and prohibiting all public or private gatherings of any number of people outside of a single household. And whereas, city of Lago Vista will work collaboratively with the county judge of Travis County, as well as federal, state, and local authorities to ensure that all reasonable, appropriate, necessary measures are taken to limit the development, contraction, and spread of COVID-19. And whereas, by the first amended declaration of local state of disaster, the city council declares all municipal rules and regulations that may inhibit or prevent prompt response to this threat are hereby temporarily suspended for the duration of the incident, and that the additional measure outlined in exhibit A, emergency order to the mayor, are necessary and proper for protection of health and safety. Whereas, the city council of the city of Lago Vista has determined that extraordinary measures must be taken to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And whereas, the city will remain open and operating to provide services to the community and will communicate with citizens and customers using telephone, email, online, and online services during this state of disaster. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city council, the city of Lago Vista, Texas, one, that the findings and recitations set out in the preamble to this declaration are found to be true and correct and are hereby adopted by the city and made part thereof for all purposes; two, that a local state of disaster is hereby declared for the city of Lago Vista pursuant to chapter 418 of the Texas Government Code; three, pursuant to chapter 418 of the Texas Government Code, this first amended declaration of local state of disaster shall continue through the earlier of termination of, A, the state of Texas declaration of disaster, or B, the Travis County declaration of disaster, unless terminated earlier by order or proclamation of the mayor under section 418.108 of the Texas Government Code; four, pursuant to chapter 418 of the government code, this first amended declaration of local state of disaster shall be given prompt in general publicity and shall be filed promptly with the city secretary; five, pursuant to chapter 418 of the government code, this first amended declaration of local state of disaster continues activation of the city of Lago Vista's emergency management plan; six, this first amended declaration of local state of disaster continues activation of the recovery and rehabilitation aspects of all applicable local or inter-jurisdictional emergency management plans and authorizes the furnishing of aid and assistance; seven, that this proclamation shall take effect at 11:59 PM on this 25th, the 25th day of March 2020. Passed and approved this 25th day of March 2020, city of Lago Vista, Ed Tidwell, Mayor. We have the certifications on there, and Mayor, I'd like to read through exhibit A, the emergency order of the mayor, which is attached to this. One, the municipal library was closed on 20 March 2020 or remain closed until further notice. Two, city offices closed to the public for face-to-face interactions on 24 March 2020 and will remain closed until further notice. Three, the Lago Vista Police Department lobby closed to the public for face-to-face interactions on 24 March 2020 and will remain until further notice. Four, the municipal golf course closed for daily play effective at close of business on Tuesday, 24 March 2020. It will remain until further notice. Members are allowed to play golf on the course during this time. City carts are not available for use. The course will reopen on Friday, 27 March 2020, to the general public with restrictions in place. Customers can book tee times with golf now or by calling the clubhouse. Payments received in the clubhouse will occur without person-to-person direct physical contact. Golf carts will be available for use with special restrictions. Five, the Green Center will operate as scheduled. Six, sports fields, tennis courts, pickleball courts, and city-owned parks will remain open and available for use. However, no public or private gatherings are permitted pursuant to Travis County order number 2020-5. Seven, the city will temporarily suspend credit card fees for all transactions until further notice. Eight, the city will consider utility account requests on a case-by-case basis upon receiving a request from a utility customer. In my official capacity as mayor and emergency management director, I consider this action to be reasonable, prudent, and necessary for the preservation of life and disaster mitigation, response, and recovery. This order is critical to the public health, safety, and welfare. Thus ordered, Ed Tidwell, Mayor, City of Lago Vista.
Thus ordered. All right, so I guess at this time, we will open it up to see if any council members have any questions.
One, one thing you might want to add, available to our citizens, is that new mobile app. Josh, for communicating information moving forward.
Mayor, we have, we have our COVID-19 response plan. Inside of that plan, which we'll send out to council this afternoon, we have the city app as a means of communication, so it's included in that document as a, as a communication tool.
All right, proceed. Anyone else? Is that everybody?
Yeah.
All right, if no, no other council members have any questions, Josh, I guess we'll go to the citizens.
I'm with you, Mayor, sorry, I forgot to push my button. The first comment that I have is from Ron Smith of Lago Vista. Ron is on this call, but I'll read this out. Question being, why are only golf members allowed to play the golf course? Shouldn't the Lago Vista City Council be leading by example? I believe that is answered as of Friday, and part of the answer there, Mayor, was obviously in our dialogue, we needed time to develop a response plan for the golf course. This is, the action plan will go into effect on Friday morning at the open of the business day for that order, and the course will be open with restrictions for interaction. As stated, we insist that anyone coming out recognize Travis County order 2020-5. One of the restrictions will be golf carts, they will be available, but individuals will only be able to ride one person to a cart. So there are restrictions in place, Mayor.
Right, okay, yeah, I, I heard that, and I knew that in the, in the exhibit A. So, I mean, it said the general public is allowed to play starting Friday, so I don't, I don't know where the question came from that only council members were, or only members were allowed to play. All right, next one.
Okay, I'll read the next one, just to answer that. The first iteration that we had sent out, Mayor, since we didn't have the, the plan ready for Friday yet, the first iteration I'd sent out and published had on there that it was still only open for the membership. So that's, I believe that's where it came from. Let me go to the next one, Jesse Lozano, also of Lago Vista. Will Lago Parks be closed? Outdoor activity is permitted, and guidance given states parks are an essential business. Mayor, as, as you already know, our parks are open, and our crews are maintaining the grass levels in our parks.
Right, the only thing I would add is, you won't see any staffing levels, other than maintenance going on. And as far as I'm concerned, we will remain allowing use of the parks and leave them open until, I don't know, higher-ups tell me I can't do it.
Yeah, man, we will continue to say, just like the order, your order says, can't have public gatherings, so they need to be mindful of that, and if they're not in a household, if they're members that do not live in the same household and they're together, they could be approached by, by the Travis County Sheriff's Office or by the Lago Vista PD and asked to not congregate, whatever that word is.
Right, and it says Ms. Lozano, I just want to make sure that she's, she's aware and clear that Lago Vista City amenities, parks, and rec centers, recreation, tennis courts, pickleball, all that stuff, it's separate from Lago Vista PLA parks, and they have already enacted something else on their behalf, but they are separate from city parks.
Yeah, I think that's part of where that question came from, as you can see, Mayor, is that the concern about PLA parks versus city.
Right.
The next, the next comment I have is from Kevin Sullivan of Lago Vista. Given the million citizens have paid to help deficit support the golf course over the last 12 years, we consider allowing all citizens to access it during the shutdown as long as they walk or take their own cart and adhere to social distancing. Mayor, again, this one came out before the updated order was posted, and we'll post this order soon after this meeting, but the answer is, as of Friday, everyone will have access to using the golf course as following social distancing in Travis County order 2020-5. Next comment comes from Kevin Sullivan of Lago Vista. Travis County Shelter and Place Order says each governmental entity in Travis County will designate which of its services are essential. Have we done that, and where is it posted? Mayor, the, the report that I read to Counselor Williams earlier, we will post that this evening. That is our COVID-19 city of Lago Vista response plan. It lays out the four levels of threat response that the city has. You and I have seen that document, but we haven't posted that online. We will send that out this eve, post that on the city website. It does not designate the full term of essential services in that document, but what it does do is it lays out how our operations will be handled. For each threat assessment, we will establish what services are essential versus nonessential. We are working on allowing employees to work from home, that can work from home. We do have a system that says if an employee has fear or needs to be out to care for themselves or for a family member, or following FMLA's new guidelines, they need to be out, they can be out. They do not have to provide a doctor's note with this new guideline for COVID-19. They simply relay that information, and so we're working around those staffing levels and limiting the interaction that our crews have with one another.
Right, I'd like to add, there is, we have not as yet identified any actual department or section of the city that is nonessential. However, they are being, by our response plan, everything is being modified to basic minimum staffing to carry on all essential functions. If there's a section or department that I'm not aware of that has been declared nonessential, we can update that, but I don't know of any actual department or section that has been declared nonessential.
No, sir, you are correct, and we closed down the library, but we still have Jan Steele, our library director, and another employee of the library that are working to do some work inside. So even though it's a closed-down facility, there is some work still going on, but no interaction and no traffic allowed to enter the building.
Right, okay. So I guess you could say, because we did, because we did completely close it to the public, we could, we could say that the library was deemed nonessential, other than basic minimum staffing.
Correct.
Okay, that should answer his question, hopefully.
I have one more comment, Mayor, and that's from, also from Kevin Sullivan in Lago Vista. Given the likely larger-than-expected loss at the golf course because of the shutdown and the need citizens have in these trying times, will the council reconsider the $187,000 for green replacement and the ill-advised hikes in citizens' water rates?
We'll reconsider all that stuff at budget time, yeah.
Those are the only comments I have, Mayor.
Okay. So those were the writings, nothing new since the broadcast?
Mayor, I don't have anything via email. Let me check one last time here, and I'm checking the chat section. No, sir, the only other comments we had were follow-ups from the PLA parks, and just to answer that, the PLA has posted their park closures on their website. We will, we can get that information, and we can share that as well on the city website, and then we can also push that information out using the app.
All right, very well. So I'd like to add, the COVID-19 response plan that will be going out as soon as we can get that put online. At some point, I will sit down and do another video broadcast, speaking of that, and explaining it, so that any citizens out there would like to watch on YouTube and get details on it, and then ask some questions. I will be doing that either sometime tonight or sometime tomorrow, and from there, I guess we'll go back to council to see if anybody on council has any more questions. If not, let me know, and we'll prepare to. If not, let me know, and, uh, we'll prepare to adjourn.
Do we need a motion to approve this declaration?
I believe that is correct, yes, because it is longer than the seven days that I have the power to declare. Thank you very much.
Are you ready for a motion?
Mayor is.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
Second. All right, I have a motion to adopt this declaration, I believe is proper, and a second. Any further comments? Josh, is Aaron good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, no other, no further comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. All right, hearing none, the, uh, declaration is adopted unanimous. At 5:58 PM.
For, for our record, it, right now, we have yourself, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Weatherly, uh, Counselor Tim Collins, Counselor Dave Williams, Counselor Art Davila, and Counselor Frank Robbins, all on the meeting.
Received, six of seven, very good, we're in emergency, pretty good. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, I just apologize to everybody for not being there this evening. Um, my wife had an incident, and I had to take her to the emergency room, so I'm sitting in the parking lot. Uh, they won't let me in the hospital, so I apologize, uh, but I'm glad we were able to continue with this. And everybody stay healthy, stay safe, and, uh, we'll get through this, wash your hands, and I'll call the meeting adjourned at 5:59 PM.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I'll stay on here until everybody's gone, and then you can let me know, and I'll hang up. Josh, were you able to tell how many people were watching?
There were 19 people that were watching.
Okay. I keep hearing all these beeps, I didn't know, I thought, man, we got 50, 60 people.
Well, there may have been quite a few more, Ed, but, um, the thing up in the left-hand corner that said the number of people said 19, I'm not sure. We had a 10, 5, 29, 6, 59, I'm not sure what all those were.
Okay, well, I wasn't included, because I was on phone, so. All right, I guess we're it, so I'm gonna go ahead and hang up.
Yeah, Mr., this is dead.
Well, with your wife.
I don't know, she just had severe stomach cramps, um, it's the lower-left quadrant, so there's not a, it's not an appendix or, um, I don't know, so we'll see.
We'll be thinking of, talk to you later.
All right, thank y'all, have a good night.